Good evening. Welcome to the June meeting of the representative town meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTMO. As all members have received the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please join me in saying a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first are the minutes of our May 10 budget meeting. As all members have received a copy of the draft minutes for that meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the May 10 minutes? Hearing none, the minutes of May 10 may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Then we have a special meeting on May 27. Once again, those minutes were distributed with the call documents for this meeting, and so the reading of those minutes will be omitted. I do want to note one change. The vote, you took one vote on those, the appropriation and bonding resolutions, and the vote announced was 187 in favor. There was a mistake in the tabulation, and the actual vote, this was not changed after, afterwards, it was just miscounted. The actual vote was 188 in favor. Zero against four. Are there any other suggested changes to the minutes of the May 27? Hearing none, those minutes may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. Mr. Ed Daudakis has joined us tonight. By the way, I welcome all who are joining us in person. Mr. Daudakis here?
Yes.
So you are going to make an announcement. Anyone speaking tonight is going to come up to the lectern here, and we will share it. Ed Daudakis, regarding an event on July 4.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting. It's great to be back at Central Middle School, and it's good to see so many of you here. But I hope you'll also join us for the raising of the flag at Town Hall on July 4. I have some flyers here that I can pass out. I'm going to ask the town clerk to email them to all members of the town meeting. We have been doing this for more than a decade, and this year, obviously, last year, we missed it. This year, baby, we're back. So please join us at 9:00 AM to raise the flag and celebrate what a great nation we all live in. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You didn't grab any of my papers, did you? I don't think so.
I've got your bills here if you want them.
All right, thank you. I did inform our district and committee chairs that I would suggest the following organization of our call this evening, which I will proceed with after I summarize this. First of all, we had items three and 23 withdrawn, so we will not take those up tonight. I will recommend shortly that we place the following items on our consent calendar. Items four through 10, item 12, 13, 15 through 20, 22, and 24. That's a total of 17 items for the consent calendar. And then we will combine for voting purposes items 11, 14, and 21, so that they could be postponed to our September meeting. The candidates involved were unable to meet with all of our committees, which would leave to take up separately items 1, 2, and 25. So at this time, I will designate pursuant to our rules the following 17 items for our consent calendar. And if they remain on the consent calendar, the only thing we will hear tonight is what I am about to say as we get no committee reports or have any debate on consent calendar items. So the first item is item number four. And that's a resolution regarding the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program. That is the same as it appears on the call. Item five is a resolution regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program. Again, same as it appears on the call. Item six is the approval of a sublease between Greenwich Adult Daycare and the Open Arts Alliance. Same as it appears on the call. All of these are same as in the call. Item seven is approval of an appropriation of $116,000, which will be given to TAD. Item eight is the appointment of Christopher Legano to be a regular member of the condemnation commission for a term expiring March 31, 2025. Item nine is the appointment of Aaron Leonard to be a regular member of the condemnation commission for a term expiring March 31, 2025. Item 10 is the appointment of Donald Conway to be a regular member of the condemnation commission for a term expiring March 31, 2025. Item 12 is the appointment of Philip Dodson to be a member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring June 30, 2025. Item 13 is the appointment of Paul DeBarry to be a regular member of the Board of Ethics with a term expiring June 30, 2024. Item 15, the appointment of Danielle Goodwin to be a regular member of the Board of Health for a term expiring June 30, 2023. Item 16 is the appointment of Natalie Queen to be a regular member of the Board of Human Services for the term expiring June 30, 2024. Item 17, the appointment of Greg Paletti to be a regular member of the Board of Human Services for the term expiring June 30, 2024. Item 18, the appointment of James Dougherty to be a regular member of the Commission on Aging for the term expiring June 30, 2024. Item 19, the appointment of Amy Jerkowitz to be a regular member of the Commission on Aging for the term expiring June 30, 2024. Item 20 is the appointment of Nisha Hurst to be a regular member of the Annual Witherall Board with a term expiring June 30, 2024. Item 22, the appointment of Richard Lowe to be a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation with a term expiring June 30, 2024. And the final item to be designated for the consent calendar is item 24. Now, this is amending a resolution that we previously adopted in April. This was the appointment of Beth Forbes to the Harbor Management Commission. And we, with our new system with designated seats, the letter, the designation, the resolution designated the wrong seat, so this is correcting that. And it is appointing Beth Forbes to the R2 position for the term expiring March 31, 2024. So those are the 17 items that I'm designating for our consent calendar pursuant to our rules. If there is any objection supported by 20 members, we will take any item objected to off the list. Is there any objection to those 17 items being placed on our consent calendar? Mr. Chairs, please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items, and I'll list them again. Items four through 10, 12, 13, 15 through 20, 22, and 24, and proceed, poll your delegation. We will provide the five-minute period in which to vote, so we will see you in five minutes. All right, we are back. We do not yet have the results of vote on the consent calendar items, but we will continue with the business of the meeting. At this point, I do want to welcome a visitor for the first time. We have to speak to the town attorney. This is Barbara Schellenberg with the firm of Marino, Zabel, and Schellenberg. So Barbara Schellenberg, welcome to the RTM.
Hi, everyone. I'm very happy to be here with you all in person, and I look forward to meeting more of the RTM members in September. And I certainly hope that you will feel free to reach out to me and the law department with any questions or concerns that you have. We are here to help and to serve. So again, I look forward to working with everyone. Thank you very much. I appreciate your introducing yourself.
All right. Thanks for joining us tonight. And Barbara and I have not had a chance to discuss the procedure that we have in place, but to protect the law department from 230 inquiries, we do have an agreement with the law department that any inquiries would go through the moderator to the law department.
Thank you.
All right. We now come to the three combined calendar items. In order to take one vote on these, we need a motion to suspend the rules. Do we have such a motion? All right, motion to suspend the rules has been moved and seconded. Motion itself is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Is there any objection to combining items 11, 14, and 21 for voting purposes? Hearing none, that motion may be adopted upon unanimous consent. So we'll get those three items before us, and then any committee chair who would like to report on those three are welcome to do it. I'm going to recognize Bob McKnight first. Any other chairs who would like to report, but then follow Bob, and then Bob will make the motion to postpone. So Bob McKnight, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Tom. Due to no shows at the Appointments Committee and various other committees, the Appointments Committee is making a motion to postpone. Number 11, Stephanie LaCocke, number 14, Jennifer Cohen, number 21, Dr. Nim Patel.
Could you just indicate which boards they're being appointed to, and we'll get those moved and seconded.
All right. Number 11, Stephanie LaCocke, Alarm Appeals Board. Number 14, Jennifer Cohen, Board of Ethics. Number 21, Dr. Nim Patel, Danny Withrow Board.
All right. All right, will anyone please move the adoption of those three resolutions? Those three resolutions have been moved and seconded and are now currently before us. Is there any, other than making this motion postpone, is there any desire to make a report by any other committee chair on those three items, 11, 14, and 21? All right, Mr. McKnight, you just formally make that motion postpone.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone to our September meeting. Stephanie LaCocke, Jennifer Cohen, and Dr. Nim Patel.
Thank you. That being a motion on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Is there any objection to postponing items 11, 14, and 21 to our September meeting? Hearing none, that motion postponed may be adopted upon unanimous consent. Thank you. I have the result of the vote on our 17 consent calendar items. Those in favor, 208; opposed, zero; abstaining, zero. The consent calendar items have carried. All right, that now brings us to item number one, which was before us in April. So it is now before us, and I will simply summarize it. It is a, and it was amended in April. And it is simply a resolution to update the Code of Ethics to allow for online filings and filings during the year rather than in the month of July following the fiscal year. And is currently the same as appears on the call. So that is now before us, and we will hear the reports of the committees that considered it. Kit Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Welcome to RTM and members and guests. The Legislative Rules Committee met on June 7. We began a joint meeting with Finance, Land Use, and Legislative and Rules. And then at 7:30, and then at 8:35, we went to our separate meetings. All districts were represented. On item one, we were helped by Paul DeBarry, who's the Chair of the Board of Ethics, and Amina Ahmad, who is the Assistant Town Attorney. And as the moderator noted, this is a second read of this item. And this item amends the Code of Ethics. It updates provisions regarding reporting by town officers who have a substantial financial interest in one or more transactions with the town. Changes the amount that triggers the reporting requirement and modernizes the means of filing reports. The Code of Ethics defines a substantial financial interest as any financial interest, direct or indirect, which is more than nominal and which is not common to the interest of other citizens of the town. As the moderator noted, we had proposed some revisions at the April meeting. They were adopted at the April meeting, and they appear in the form that appears on the call. The amount for triggering reporting was set in 1965 at $100. This amendment would double that to $200. It also allows not only the filing of written statements with the town clerk, but also using an electronic system supervised by the Board of Ethics. However, the first paragraph of the revised version contains some, raises some questions and contains some typos. The revisions changed the date for filing the report to promptly after the town officer becomes aware of the financial interest in each fiscal year. There are situations where that date may be difficult to determine. Legislative and Rules voted to amend the first paragraph to eliminate the typos and to clarify the dates for filing. The vote to amend was 12-0-0, and the votes on legal order and on the merits as amended were 12-0-0. And I will make the motion to amend at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Richard Newman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Town Services met last Tuesday to discuss this item for the second time. Our previous vote in April was 10-0-0. We were aware of the amendment that Mr. Bergweger and his committee were going to make, so we voted on as amended this meeting, and our vote again was 10-0-0. Item, or Districts 4 and 5 abstained. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bergweger.
All right. The Legislative Rules Committee moves to amend the first paragraph of this item as follows. I'm reading from the call. In the second line, it says the town totaling $200, parentheses, dollar sign 200, period, closed parent. The period doesn't belong there, and we deleted it. Goes on to say, or more each fiscal year. Delete the words "each" and insert "in a," so it reads "or more in a fiscal year." Then, four lines down, it starts with, "and the total amount received or expected to be received." Then there's an underline from such transactions. Delete the underline. In the fifth line, it starts with the word "year," and then it says, "such statement shall be filed." Delete "shall" and replace it with "may," so it said, "such statements may be filed in the office of the town clerk." Then delete the words "or promptly as possible," so that reads, "such statements may be filed in the office of the town clerk after the town officer becomes aware of such interests." And then add, "or not later than 30 days after the end of the fiscal year," period. And that's the amendment.
All right, thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second, and it's now before us. Discussion on the Legislative and Rules motion to amend. Hang on one minute. All right. Mr. DeBarry, I know you signed up. I don't know if you want to speak on this or before we take a vote on the merits, but Paul DeBarry, do you care to comment at all at this point? Who is Chair of the Board of Ethics? Mr. DeBarry with us?
I don't see him.
You do not see him?
If he could raise his hand if he was there.
If Mr. DeBarry is here, would you please raise your hand so we can identify you? All right, is there any objection? We can adopt this upon unanimous consent. And I'm only talking about the motion to amend at the moment. Is there any objection to the Legislative and Rules motion to amend as described by Kit Bergweger? Hearing none, the Legislative and Rules motion to amend item one is adopted upon unanimous consent. All right, item one is now before us on the merits as amended. We had no one sign up for that. Mr. DeBarry is still not with us. All right, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number one, and proceed, poll your delegation. And we will take our five-minute break. All right, sorry to interrupt the musical interlude, but there is something we do have to celebrate here. And District 4, now on two votes, has been done within a minute. So, yes, they're not the largest. Congratulations. Let's be like District 4. All right, we are back. And by the way, that was Lucy Von Brockel, who is whipping District 4 into shape. So thank you, Lucy, for your good work. All right, continuing, we do not yet have the vote on item one. We will report that when it's available. Item number two now comes before us. This is a resolution from District 9. Betsy Fruman, Chair of District 9.
Mr. Moderator, I believe Jane Arnon was going to speak to this and not Ms. Fruman.
All right, Jane Arnon, District 9. Can Jane Arnon please raise her hand so we can locate her? Jane Weisbecker. Unmute yourself, please.
Okay, am I unmuted?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow RTM members. I begin my discussion of the second read of this item with a quick story. Yes.
All you're doing is introducing the item at the moment.
Okay, then I'm not going to do that yet, the story. All right, this item is as appears on the call. I can read it.
Well, you can summarize it if you like, or?
It appears, it appears on the call. Resolve that Chapter 2, Section, Article 9, Section 2-39 of the Code of Ordnances of the Town of Greenwich be amended as on the call.
All right, and this amends the ordinance requiring building committees for certain projects undertaken by the Board of Education.
Correct.
That being, all right, so this is actually before us for a second read, and we can dispose of it tonight. So item two is now before us. We will hear the reports of the committees that considered this. Anyone here to go first? Mr. Bergweger, you're.
Okay, that's fine. At our meeting on Monday, we were helped by Jane Arnon and Brian Rainey, who are both members of District 9, which sponsors this amendment. We also had Amina Ahmad, the Assistant Town Attorney. As noted, this will affect the appointment of building committees for the Board of Education. It will broaden the establishment of these committees. Currently, building committees are required for projects, Board of Education projects, that receive state aid. This amendment would amend the building committee requirements and apply them to projects that receive federal aid or that require one or more municipal improvements. The amendment further provides that in cases where a building committee is not mandated by applicable law, a majority of the Board of Education can request that the Board of Selectmen waive the building committee requirement by a majority vote. This proposal has been before the RTM in similar formats in recent meetings, and the districts for, and the reasons for District 9's proposal have been expressed in meetings and writings. The District 9 LNR members further explained those reasons at our meeting. The reasons include the need for major projects to have oversight and accountability. The Board of Education has a large capital budget for future projects, and those other projects would benefit from having building committees. Building committees provide transparency. The building committee would allow the school system to focus on curriculum and existing facilities. Our vote on legal order was 12-0-0. The vote on the merits was 11-0-1, with Districts 3 abstaining on the ground that more community oversight was not needed.
Thank you. All right, before calling for our Education Committee report, I will give you the vote on item number one. This was the amendment to the Code of Ethics, to the ordinance regarding the Code of Ethics. Those in favor, 210; opposed, zero; abstaining, two. Item one has carried. All right, next up is Susan Feige with the report of our Education Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Your Education Committee met on Monday, June 7 via Zoom. We heard general updates on the current school year and plans for next year's school opening from Superintendent Tony Jones. We then considered and voted on item two, a proposal for the District 9 to amend the town code to required building committees for school projects that apply for federal funds or require one or more municipal improvements. Item two was proposed by D9 to amend the town rules to require building committees for any updates that will be applying for state or federal aid or require one or more MIs. The amendment also includes language enabling the Board of Education to request the waiver of this requirement from the Board of Selectmen. Betsy Fruman, Jane Weisbecker of District 9 presented the item to us with the assistance of D9 Education Committee members Abby Large and Seth Bacon. We also heard from Michael Mason and Leslie Moriarty of the BET, and Peter Bernstein, Karen Kowalski, and Peter Scher of the Board of Ed. We considered this proposal at our March meeting and the full RTM meeting in March. We voted to refer this item back to District 9. They added the waiver provision and is now back before us with a second read. Under the current rules, building committees are required for school construction projects that will apply for state reimbursement. This change to the rules would also require building committees to oversee school construction projects that will apply for federal aid or need one or more MIs. The newly added language would also allow the Board of Ed to waive building committees as stated before. Mrs. Fruman and Ms. Weisbecker said that the D9 is proposing this change for several reasons. They believe it was good governance to have this type of public oversight provided by building committees. They feel that if the state requires that level of oversight, so should the town. They feel that the exclusion of large school projects, which don't require state funding, was an oversight in the original rule, which was proposed back in 1969. They believe that building committees are defined by the town rules, provide greater transparency, accountability, and community expertise than other types of committees that may be used to advise large building projects. They also feel that having building committees for those projects would allow the Board of Ed to focus on educational issues and not construction issues. She said that they heard comments at the March meeting regarding whether this rule would require building committees for smaller projects where they wouldn't make sense, i.e. the baseball shed, because it does have an MI for the FAR, and add the waiver provision on a way to limit the unintended consequences for that particular rule change. We also heard from members of the Board of Ed who gave their individual perspectives on the item. The Board of Education had discussed this proposed change at the previous meeting, but a vote was not taken. Mr. Bernstein said that he doesn't understand why the rule chain only singles out Board of Education projects and does not apply to larger town products, like, projects like the skating rink. Karen Kowalski said that she supports the amendment because she believes that building committees committees have a lot to add and they can bring focus to the project, enabling the Board of Ed to concentrate on other issues. Peter Scher also said he supports the change. He said that the major construction projects during this tenure on the Board of Ed, all but Cardinal Stadium had building committees. He noted that because of, because of this, the Board of Ed has spent a great time discussing Cardinal Stadium, which he believes would have, their time would have been better spent on other issues. Ms. Moriarty of the BET raised concerns about exhausting the supply of willing volunteers over time if required to do too many building committees. She noted that building committees volunteers often bring a particular professional expertise and the committee's work is very time consuming. She also suggests that we might create a primer for building committees so that the work is not reinvented each time. Michael Mason of the BET said that under state rules, you can't apply for state reimbursement without a building committee. Expanding the number of projects that require a building committee would enable these projects to decide to, could they decide to apply for state funding at a later time. We then had discussion and voted on the item. It passed with a vote of six, four, two. Districts two, three, four, nine, ten and twelve voted in favor. Districts five, six, seven and eight voted against and districts one and eleven abstained. Those in favor of these changes agree that District Nine's view of building committees provide good governance, expertise, increased transparency and free up the Board of Ed time for other issues. They did note that they need to continue, continually longer term projects where BOE membership and staffing may change. They believe the proposed waiver process will prevent appointments of committees where there aren't really necessary. They also feel this may help the public be more supportive and larger capital, I'm sorry, be more supportive of the larger capital spending for schools over the next several years as these funds will be overseen by building committees. Those opposed raised several concerns. While most appreciate the spirit of the proposal, which advocates for good governance and oversight, many said they did not see the need for this change and were worried that it could have unintended consequences. They noted that under the current rules, the Board of Ed can, on their own, request a building committee for whatever project it believes it requires. In the past decades, only one major construction project that didn't otherwise have a building committee is Cardinal Stadium and the Board of Ed has indicated that it likely will create one for Phase Two. Members said that they believe the Board of Ed would benefit from more professional staff to help with their capital projects rather than more volunteers. Some are concerned that the waiver process could be cumbersome and the building committees could slow down projects that require selectmen to appoint members and then the RTM to further approve. There is also concern that too many building committees will take too much valuable time from the limited BOE facility staff and BOE members that are required to attend these meetings. Those abstaining said they wanted to have a better understanding of the MI process and what triggers it and to understand how much this expands the scope of building committee requirements. Thank you.
Michael Spilow, Chair of our Public Works Committee, followed by Lucy Johnson, Chair of our Budget Over.
Good evening, Public Works Committee met and discussed this item. I won't repeat all of the specific pros and cons. Those in favor generally felt that added oversight of a building committee was both necessary and beneficial and they also felt there was a deep pool of volunteers in town available. Those opposed felt the oversight was not necessary and volunteers were in short supply. The vote was eight in favor, four opposed, none abstained.
Thank you. Lucy Johnson with the Budget Overview Report.
Good evening. Your VOC voted unanimously to take up the second read of District Nine's ordinance as our committee had taken up the first read five months ago in January twenty twenty-one. We invited District Nine Chair Betsy Fruman to present this item to the committee. Betsy explained District Nine's detailed work over the past five months, which involved researching the issues as well as meeting with various stakeholders, including Board of Ed members, Town Law Department, Department of Public Works, RTM Committee and Districts, and then they synthesized and incorporated those suggestions. The primary modification involved required a building committee only for school projects qualifying for municipal improvement status rather than other factors such as cost of the project. They also addressed a concern that there could be reasons why a building committee would be inappropriate and therefore the ordinance includes a mechanism to reject appointing a building committee. Some of the VOC's observations and comments included a desire for all Board of Ed members to be focused on their role to create the best programs, policies and curriculum for the children and not spend scarce volunteer time on capital project implementation. Second, it was noted that there are numerous resident volunteers who are willing to serve and bring extra knowledge and skills to the project. As an example, the Greenwich High School Vestibule Project had an oversubscription of interested residents. It should not matter how large a project is funded to depend if there is a building committee. It's noted the Greenwich High School Vestibule Project is a two point eight million dollar project and the Cardinal Stadium Phase One project is three point six million. Thus, the VOC was overall in favor of District Nine's proposed ordinance. The vote was seven, two, three. District Four and Six voted against. District Eight, Ten, Twelve abstained. The knowing and the abstention vote were because some wanted to learn more before casting their final vote. Others felt the amendment gave too much flexibility for the Board of Selectmen to opt out before me a building committee and they really wanted a building committee. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our committee reports on item two. At this point, I'm going to call upon Tom Broadhurst, Chair of District Five, who would like to offer a motion on the debate. Broadhurst?
Mr. Moderator, I offer a motion to limit debate to five minutes for the proponent, five minutes for the principal opponent and two minutes per speaker per motion. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to limit debate? And this is for the balance of the evening, Mr. Broadhurst?
Correct.
For the balance of the evening. Terms of the motion, five minutes would be afforded to the proponent of any motion and five minutes to the principal opponent, a ladder to be determined by the moderator and two minutes for all other speakers' promotion. We'll take a raised hand. The motion to limit debate is not itself debatable and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. In the first instance, I will take a raised hand vote on this. So, all hands down, only members may vote. If you are in favor of Mr. Broadhurst's motion to limit debate, please raise your hand now. Ms. Bulgares, would you care to count the in-person raised hand? Hundred and nine and twenty-five, thank you. All hands down? Those opposed to Ms. Broadhurst's motion to limit debate, please raise your hand now. I'll, I'll count the hands in. Mr. Burr? Are they going up and down? Thank you. All right, that is a, exceeds the two-thirds majority necessary. So, for the balance of the evening, we do have a limit on debate in effect and I will remind as we, as we go through. So, discussion? All right, so, so we have a motion. I understand we have a motion from District Eight to refer this, I'm sorry, to postpone this item. There were no other motions, correct, from our committees? All right. So, at this point, I will recognize Cheryl Moss, Chair of District Eight. Are you going to present the District Eight motion?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right, you have the floor.
Okay, sorry. District Eight, good evening, everybody. District Eight proposes to postpone item two until our September meeting in order to allow the BOE to review, opine and vote on the proposed language of this ordinance change, which was not available to the BOE prior to their May twentieth meeting. I'm not really sure, Mr. Burr, am I allowed to continue or did you just want me to produce it?
Let me just clarify, that is offered on behalf of one of our districts. It does not require a second and is now currently before us. This is a motion to postpone item two to our September meeting. You being the proponent of this motion, you have up to five minutes to discuss it.
Okay, thank you very much. Our district felt that postponing until September would give the BOE ample time to review the latest language that was not available to them at their May twentieth meeting so that the RTM would have a complete perspective of the BOE's, BOE's opinions before we vote in September. Particularly, I would like to understand and why as a, excuse me, particularly I would like to understand why a committee which would require the time to be assembled and approved would be better than the recommendation by Blom Chapero of hiring a professional position to manage these projects, large and small. In fact, the RTM voted against a similar proposal by the Governance Committee to implement a townwide capital projects committee, which would have been far superior to the temporary committees being proposed and that it would have had, would have minutes of its meetings and thus the longevity with which to tackle the numerous capital projects on a townwide basis. Postponing item two would give the BOE the time we need to determine if this proposed amendment would slow down their process and if there is a better solution to addressing the management of BOE capital projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Bernstein is Chair of Board of Education. Mr. Bernstein, do you care to speak at this point on the motion? This is a motion to postpone only.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, just for everybody's information, the BOE was scheduled to take this item up for discussion at our regular business meeting on April twenty-second. On April nineteenth, I received an email from the district chair that the District Nine was canceling its meeting. They had not yet finalized their changes, so she couldn't send me final language. The thoughts that she had previously sent me, she said, were not those of the district but were hers. She did say at that time that they were struggling with how to keep politics out of the waiver process. Thus, when we had our discussion on April twenty-second, we were not able to take that up. District Nine didn't meet actually to finalize their, their language until May twelfth, although they ended up having to meet again on May eighteenth. We did not receive that language in time to put it on the agenda for our May business meeting, nor have we received it since until we got the call. So, the Board of Ed has not had an opportunity to actually take a vote on this. If we were presented the opportunity, we could put this on a future agenda and then report back to the RTM to let them know what the outcome of that vote was.
Thank you. All right, we do have speakers who've signed up online to speak on the motion to postpone. And again, I welcome anyone who is in person, if you care to speak, I will recognize you at any time you raise your hand. So, we're going to start with Seth Bacon, followed by Molly Salivi, speaking on the motion, the District Eight motion to postpone. Seth Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm glad that I was able to go right after the, Mr. Bernstein. I think it's inaccurate to say that this was not taken up at the April twenty-second meeting. This was discussed at length for thirty minutes. A transcript of the meeting was provided, hopefully to all districts to see. They talked through this at length. There was discussion about what the final waiver language would look like. Understandably, they did not have the actual final language, but they did have the waiver process. Mr. Bernstein did talk about it. And I think most importantly, at the, towards the end of the, of the conversation, Mr. Bernstein said, and I'm quoting from the transcript right now, "I appreciate what you said. I will say District Nine's actions are not going to hinge on what the Board of Education says or does. I'm sure they'll take input into consideration." And there's several of them on here tonight and there'll be other people who will probably watch the video. You can feel free to reach out to your RTM district. They're your representatives. You might want to talk to them. I'm paraphrasing. He said, now he might want to talk to them at the end. This has been discussed. I think it's noteworthy that the motion uses the word opine. There has been a lot of opining on this. We've opined on this. We've discussed this. This has been going on since December. I implore you, do not postpone this again. Mr. Bernstein, when this was discussed at District Eight, said he could not guarantee that this would be voted on before the September RTM meeting. This is a stall tactic to run the clock out on this ordinance change. Let's vote. It's a second read. Let's vote and vote tonight. Thank you.
Let me just call a speaker to order. We don't ascribe ill motives to other speakers, so we'll take, we'll take what is said at face value if you have some facts, but otherwise, we're not going to cast aspersions on the motives of other speakers.
Could you, could you clarify that, Mr. Speaker? What aspersions?
Excuse me, you're finished. Molly Salivi to be followed by Brian Rainey.
Hi, everyone. Firstly, I express my thanks to D nine for their efforts as I fully appreciate the monumental due diligence. This motion to postpone is born out of what some believe, myself included, to be good process and is a thoughtful, measured and respectful approach that a responsible, thorough and well-informed legislative body, I think, ought undertake before deciding to alter how another body permanently functions. We have the personal opinions of some individual Board of Education members. What we do not have is the comprehensive, formal cohesive opinion of the entire board by vote. Why? Well, back on April twenty-second, when they discussed this item in some detail, and some of you may have either read the transcript or listened to the recording or attended the meeting live that evening, which I would have done, but we had a VOC meeting that evening ourselves. They did not have in front of them the Board of Education final legally approved written ordinance language, that is, language before us tonight. Therefore, at that time, the BOE had nothing conclusive for which to formally opine and vote. Yes, they discussed it. What's happened since then? Well, the BOE had their May meeting on May twentieth, one day before the May twenty-one submission deadline for tonight's June call, which contains this second read final language. And a few various BOE members have made their way to committee and district meetings this month, so we've merely heard fractured individual board opinions. Perhaps most importantly, though, for me, some stated the BOE viewpoint as an entire board isn't needed. We don't need their full input as this is an RTM decision. Indeed, it is an RTM decision, but I think it's important to know the formal position of the BOE on this specific item as it stands tonight before us and particularly when we may be unwittingly imposing red tape and bureaucracy that could cause delay. Further, to not seek their complete documented judgment as a group, I believe, is not proper collaboration between our bodies. If you are aligned, please vote no on the, please vote yes on the motion to postpone. Thank you.
Brian Rainey to be followed by Donna Gatti.
Mr. Moderator, I have a question, I have a question from our district. This is Brian Mallon from District Nine.
What, what are you interrupting us for, Mr. Mallon?
They, the district would like to know why we have not been able to present our item yet.
Well, we have, we have a motion postponing. If Ms. Weisbecker would like to speak, I, I'm going on the list on, of those who signed up to speak on the motion postpone. Would Ms. Weisbecker like to speak on this now? Your district, you know, I'm calling Seth Bacon, Brian Rainey, Donna Gatti, Osa DeCile, you're, these are all District Nine members. Ms. Weisbecker was not signed up, so the item was presented and we're now debating a motion to postpone it. So, that's the procedure here. So, I'm happy to recognize her if she would like to be recognized now.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'm here. I did, I believe I did sign up to speak on this item and on our item as well. Would you like me to address the item in particular or this motion?
All right, so, yes, I, I'm sorry, I do see you listed down below.
Yes.
And, and I will designate you as the principal opponent and you have up to five minutes on this.
Okay. We oppose this motion. We don't think that it is timely. For one thing, this is, this item is now on second read. It was before the RTM in substantially the same form in March. It was on the call. We believe at that time, it was, it was, in fact, fully vetted by all committees. So, this is really the second time it has come back. The purpose of the second read rule, as we all know, is to allow a couple of months worth of visitation on an item, considerate- worth of visitation on an item, consideration, which this has already gotten. In fact, we had a somersault, as everyone will recall, on the calendar in January that dealt with the Cardinal Stadium alone, and then brought the item that came back in March in general on this issue, because it's a much bigger issue than the stadium. There's an omission in the code. The Board of Ed, it does involve them, but this isn't up to the Board of Ed. We have attempted to loop them in when we could, to find out what they would like for this, this language to say. When this item was drafted and put forward in March, and then referred back to us, we included the Board of Ed. We invited them to meetings. We corresponded with various members of the Board in emails, and invited their input on the language that should be presented on the second read as a final read on the item to the RTM. We, at that point in March, put in the waiver language, which we believe addressed the issues that the Board of Ed had raised to us in considering the issue in March. The waiver basically provides the Board of Ed, at its option, on its vote, to go to the Board of Selectmen and request a waiver for any school project that can be waived of a school-building committee by law. So that just would include any project that doesn't have state funds applied for. In doing that, we provided the waiver language, which is what was discussed in April at the Board of Ed meeting. There's no magic to the language, and we, we gave it to them in an email. And in fact, I recall seeing in the transcript of the Board of Ed meeting in April that the, the call was put up so that the members could read it and understand what we were doing at that time. So after the waiver language was provided to the members by email by our district, we didn't get any further substantive comments from the Board of Ed. So looking at this, you know, noticing an opportunity to be heard, they, they looked at it. We haven't gotten any further additional requests for changes to the language from them, and I don't know how a formal vote should affect this body in voting on the, what's before the body today, on a second read. We believe that, at this point, it's ripe for decision, that waiting till September, which I believe is what is being looked for, is not necessary, and we would like the item to be voted on tonight. So that's all I'm going to say about this.
Thank you. Brian Rainey, to be followed by Donna Gaddios-Zeal.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to address the, the idea that the BOE should have the opportunity to approve language that would limit their own discretion. That, that seems odd, and frankly impractical, given that the item could be amended on our floor to change any part of it. The idea that the, the Board of Ed should have final language, and that should somehow feed into our process is, is troubling, and, and frankly, I think inappropriate. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Donna Gaddios-Zeal, to be followed by Janet McMahon.
Hi, this is Donna Gaddios-Zeal. I would ask that you vote down this postponement. For District Nine, this has been going on for five months. As you've heard, we've incorporated a number of people involved, the DPW, the Law Department. We're hearing that the language has not been seen by the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed has been very involved in this process. We have had a number of them at every meeting, Mr. Shear, Ms. Kirsch, and so on and so forth. There's been communications via email. When District Eight points out that the language is new to them, the waiver came out of an email by Mr. Bernstein on March 3rd, and District Nine took that in and changed the way you see the item today. If you go through the transcript of the April meeting, there was extensive discussion. I cannot believe, at this point, that people feel that the Board of Ed has not been involved in this process. They have, and so have many other people. It is really our responsibility, as RTM members, to move this forward. It's about how our taxpayer dollars are spent. Please vote down this postponement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Janet McMahon, to be followed by Dan Ozzes-Meer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I rise tonight to speak in support of my district's motion to postpone item two to our September meeting, pending a formal recorded vote by the Board of Education on this item. First, I want to be clear that I appreciate the spirit and intent of District Nine's ordinance change. Generally speaking, I am always in favor of more checks and balances, better governance, and increased transparency in all of our town's governmental bodies. However, regardless of where you stand on item two, I think you will all agree that this amendment will have direct and profound impacts on the Board of Education's operations in perpetuity. Nevertheless, the Board of Ed as a body has not yet voted on this item. While it is true that the Board had discussed the item at their April 22nd meeting for 28 minutes, this was before District Nine formally added the waiver language, as it appears on the call today. In fact, that April 22nd meeting was called to, was merely called to solicit feedback from the Board of Ed members on a potential waiver mechanism. Furthermore, if you watch the video, it is apparent that many members of the Board had not even seen District Nine's waiver language at that time, so a vote could not have been taken at that meeting, even if they wanted to do so. I also find it disturbing to vote on an item which has far-reaching implications on another branch of our town's government, without having them formally opine on the item themselves. It is a slippery slope. Imagine if the Board of Selectmen unilaterally decided to change the RTM's rules or purview without our vote and consent. This is overreach of the most dangerous kind. Finally, I want to note that our district voted overwhelmingly for this motion with a bipartisan 14 to 1 vote. Please vote yes on District Eight's motion to postpone item two until the Board of Education can make an informed vote on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Ozzes-Meer, to be followed by Fernando Shiro.
Thank you. I would urge you to vote no to the motion to postpone. No, my reasons have been very well-covered by District Nine. No, I, I would really emphasize a few things. One is, I've been very impressed with the quality of work the district has done, even recently, in terms of showing transcripts, et cetera, of meetings. I think they've really addressed the concerns that have been raised. I would also note that this process started in January, so whether you want to call it a second or a third read, I suppose that's anyone's call, but this has been out there. If the Board of Ed wanted different language, they could have suggested it formally. They've had months to do that. And ultimately, you know, I don't see this as a profound change. I just think it's good process. The Board of Ed can request a waiver at any time, so I do not think that we are impacting their flexibility, if they have a good reason. Thank you.
Fernando Shiro, to be followed by Susan Fahey.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Similarly to what some others have been saying, I think voting yes to postpone this item would be not in favor, for one, our schools, and just general oversight. We've worked very hard on this in District Nine, and the fact that the Board of Ed has seen this multiple times, and have not taken this up themselves, is very, you know, on them. So thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Susan Fahey, to be followed by Abby Large. She was here, she gave a report earlier.
Sorry. Sorry. Sorry about that. I was three minutes, now I'll cut it down to two. Good evening, fellow RTM members. I rise in support of the District Eight motion to postpone item two to September. I side to speak tonight, as I've heard many facts that have been going around, including those from District Nine members, that will not accomplish what they're trying to accomplish. They said a building committee, if they had, had one for Cardinal Stadium, would have not had the delays over the last five years. A building committee will give us more public input, and this language is needed now because of roughly $300 million in future spending. The delays at Cardinal Stadium have been well-spoken about before. We had over four or five superintendents, three COOs and headmasters with delays, as well as GAF coming in at the last minute with money for some changes that they wanted to see take place. As for more public input, a building committee does not give you more public input. By the time a building committee is voted on by the RTM, the BOE has already approved the project, the Ed specs, and the money. A building committee is merely an executing body. They take the, voted on Ed specs and put them out to bid. The building committee must return to the Board of Ed if they want to deviate from Ed specs, or if they have to submit, commit to more spending money. Lastly, we talked about the next $300 million, which my understanding is, are those are all large projects of refurbishment or rebuilds in our schools. Each one will seek state reimbursement and trigger its own building committee. However, my support for the District Eight motion is actually to have the Board of Ed put on their agenda a Cardinal, a Cardinal Stadium committee. In our D11 meeting, we asked Peter Shear why they hadn't voted on a Cardinal Stadium committee, and he responded that it was never put on their agenda. So I say, God's sakes, put it on your agenda. If they take up the matter at the Board of Ed and listen to the outcry from D9, the public citizens and elected officials of the RTM, then it will come back before us, and we can vote to add the language then. But I do feel strongly that adding, adding language to this ordinance, which will be long-lasting, should be seriously considered. It will have impacts on the town, making things more bureaucratic and cumbersome in a system that is already difficult to navigate. It's hard to know the politics or the makeup of the future of the Board of Ed, the future Selectmen's office, or what will be politicized as projects. New legislative language should be something that outlives all of us and can be sustainable. I urge each of you to vote to postpone until September. It's only three months for long-lasting language, and then I urge the Board of Ed to go ahead and vote on a building committee for Cardinal Stadium. Thank you.
All right, before calling on the last sign-up speaker, is there anyone in here who would like to speak on it? If you are, you know, you're welcome to come down. All right, Abby Large will be our last sign, sign-up speaker.
Thank you. D9 has spent months of inclusive and exhaustive due diligence by including the Board of Ed in one form or another during our entire process of proposing and drafting the ordinance amendment. This process has taken place from February through June. All District Nine meetings are made public. Joe Kelly has attended most of our discussions. In March, D9 specifically added the waiver language to our proposal in order to accommodate the Board of Ed's concern that too many projects would fall under the amended provision. This waiver language was shared with the Board of Ed's share by email, as stated before, in March. The District Nine resolution before you was provided to the Board of Ed for discussion at their April 22nd meeting, with a specific request for the Board of Ed's input regarding the waiver provision. Mr. Bernstein explained the waiver in detail at this Board of Ed meeting for others to opine. They spoke about it for 30 minutes. Further, we had multiple emails with Board of Ed members from March on, as well as meetings involving one or more Board of Ed members on March 12th and May 18th, as we took our official vote on the final language in proposed amendment. Prior to making our final revisions to the proposal, we conferred with Mr. Bernstein and made revisions based on his concerns. We have no further suggested revisions from anyone at the Board of Ed since the April Board of Ed meeting. Please vote no to postpone. District Nine has been inclusive, thoughtful, and diligent with all of our governing bodies, and it's up to the RTM to decide on this ordinance, not the Board of Ed. Thank you.
All right, no one, no one present?
Mr. Burns?
Who's speaking?
Tom, Tom Height, Cheryl Moss from D8. John Eddy said he had, he'd signed up to speak on this.
Not on the motion to postpone, he didn't. All right, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? If, well, let me, let me just explain. We do have a separate sign-up on the merits of this. This is, I'm now going to call for a vote solely on the motion to postpone. And getting back to Mr. Mallon's question, parliamentary procedure provides that subsidiary motions take precedence over the main motion. So what is on the call is considered to be a main motion. A motion to postpone is a subsidiary motion that has priority over that main motion. So once that's made, we have to dispose of that motion to postpone before we can then discuss the main motion on the merits. Now, if this motion to postpone fails, then that is exactly what we're going to do, and we have a separate list of speakers who have signed up to speak on the merits, whether we should adopt this proposal or, or reject it. But before we can get to that, we have to decide, are we going to put this off until September? So at this point, I'm going to call for a vote. Will the district tabulators, please mark your voting cards. District Eight motion to postpone item two to our September meeting. If you are in favor of postponing, you vote yes. If you want to take a final vote tonight on item two, you know, we would debate it first, you should vote no on this current motion to postpone. We will allow, we're going to have to await the result of this, so we're not going to put a time, a clock up. We, we need to have the final vote before we can continue. So if you want to postpone, you vote yes now. If you want to take this up on the merits and take a final vote on the merits, you vote no. All right, please poll your delegation. Mayor Culpa, that was my mistake. I was reminded that we adopted the five-minute rule for a reason, which was to cut off the time to vote. It's not going to be unlimited. At the moment, we're waiting for District Eight. So if District Eight could please get the vote in, that is the, the last district, and I will, I will try not to repeat that mistake. We're not, we're not giving unlimited time for these votes. All right, we have the result of the vote on the District Eight motion to postpone item two to September. Those in favor, 87, opposed 121, abstaining 1. That motion has failed. So item two is now before us on the merits. As I said, we do have a list of interested speakers. Jane Weisbecker, you are the proponent of this. You have up to five minutes. Jane Weisbecker.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow RTM members. District Nine School Building Committee journey began last December, when one of us realized the GHS bleachers had come down. Our discussion led to the realization that no town building committee had ever been seated for this project. We were shocked that a $13 million project of this scale did not have a town building committee. Made no sense then, makes no sense now. Our district's reaction to this situation led to our January 21 submission to the RTM of a somersault addressing the GHS stadium project. We then took a deep dive into what we now call everything we ever wanted to know about school-building committees but were afraid to ask. Soon realizing this issue went well beyond the stadium, we withdrew the somersault and worked on the proposed amendment to Section 239, which originally appeared on the March call. I can say without reservation that the amendment you are considering tonight has been double and triple-vetted. We've received input from the DPW, the Law Department, P&amp;Z, the Board of Selectmen, the BET, and various members of the Board of Ed and the RTM. Our proposed amendment is intended to remedy what District Nine believes is a serious omission in the town code. Under the current language of 239, a building committee is required only for school projects involving state aid. What this means is that major school construction projects, where there is no application for state aid, like the stadium, are destined to fall between the cracks. These projects, which would clearly benefit from the supervision of a town building committee, will not get one. District Nine requests the RTM's assistance in correcting this omission now, since there are approximately $300 million in school capital expenditures on our horizon. Now on to just a bit of legalese, which now I don't have too much time for. Article 9, Chapter 2, Sections 239 through 246 of the Code were adopted in the '60s to govern school-building committees. These provisions, and therefore our amendment, don't only apply to school construction projects. There's no similar provision in the Code applying to town construction projects in general, since they're run by the DPW. Our proposed amendment is to Section 239, which defines when a school-building commitment must be formed. The remaining sections of Article 9 are not impacted by our amendment. The Code is specific as to who should sit on a school-building committee. The Board of Ed appoints a voting member, as is- The Board of Ed appoints a voting member, as does the BET and various other members are appointed by the RTM on nomination of the Board of Selectmen. There are also non-voting members. In other words, the Code provides for the seating of a committee capable of providing skilled assistants on every aspect of a school project. The Code-defined process of seating a building committee is also unchanged by District 9 amendment. The process is initiated by the Board of Ed. They file specs and requirements with the Board of Selectmen, and a building committee is formed. After it is formed and the RTM makes final appointments, the committee's got to meet within 30 days to start its work. The committee also has to carefully follow the specs of the board. And also importantly, the building committees issue reports every three months to the town, including the RTM and the Board of Ed. As previously noted, Section 239 currently requires a building committee only for projects involving state funds. Our proposed amendment expands the section to include school projects that use state as well as federal funds, and to those projects requiring one or more municipal improvements. As you know, municipal improvements are major projects. They involve the location relocation or major redesign of public property and buildings, including schools. P&amp;Z has advised us that the only school project in the last five years that required a municipal improvement was the GHS stadium. This low number leads us to believe that our amendment will not cause an unworkable spike in building committees. Rather, we believe that our amendment closes a loophole in the code. Finally, I'm going to avoid, or actually I'm going, not going to go into our nose to the Board of Ed. I think you all realize that we have tried over the last five months to include them. We've emailed them, we've included them in meetings, we have included language in our proposal that addresses their concerns. We don't believe at this point that any small projects will be impacted, or that there will be quote unquote unintended consequences. We do not believe that. Finally, I'm going to highlight what we believe the overwhelmingly positive attributes of the school building committee model for major Greenwich school projects. First, with building committee in place for major projects, the Board of Ed and school staff can commit resources to education, facility maintenance and not construction. When a building committee assumes total control of a project, the school district's employees who are building experts can attend and participate in those meetings, but they're free from the daily oversight of building construction to continue essential management and maintenance of school facilities. That's what we rely on them to do. Second-
Ms. Weisbecker, you got to wrap it up.
Okay, second, Greenwich is a town that runs on expert volunteers, the power. We believe, based on comments from Selectmen Camillo, that a large number of volunteers stand at the ready to serve on school building committees. Finally, we look only to Glenville and New Lebanon for examples of the historical success of building committees. We respectfully request everyone's support in this and look forward to your vote. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I had not announced the next speaker. Mr. Bernstein, are you prepared to go forward as, as the principal opponent?
Yes, sir, I can. And I just want to note, I'm speaking as an individual, not on behalf of the board, and I'll try to do this as quickly as I can. This is a motion to impose additional process on the Board of Ed when such process is not necessary. And it's a process that the town, through this body, has decided not to impose on town capital projects. If you vote for this, you should be pursuing building committees for all townside capital projects. Do not lose sight of the fact that the genesis of this is the stadium project, and that there are those who wanted more control over that project, people beyond the BOE. Most of our projects have all applied for state funding, already requiring a building committee, and that will be the case for projects contemplated by the master facilities plan. Let me be clear, the $300 million in projects that keep getting thrown around will all have building committees, as we will be seeking state funding. In fact, the stadium is the only project I can think of in all my years on the board that doesn't have state funding available, and thus there is no building committee. Phase one was, once the design issues were actually settled, and there was issues with getting that done, because we had an outside group who had some opinions, some good, some not so good. But phase one is a relatively simple project, and in fact, the bleachers started going up today. So if you drive by in the post road, take a look. Phase two is a little more complicated, putting a road in, a bridge, moving tennis courts. And ironically, there is interest among Board of Ed members to potentially pursue a building committee for phase two of the stadium project. However, we haven't held a vote on that yet, because the project's further behind phase one. We don't actually have money for phase two yet. So we're not to the point where we would, we would vote, we can vote, and we should vote. And there's interest, by the way. But ultimately, decisions about whether to request a building committee outside the parameters of the current ordinance should come from the Board of Ed, not the RTM and not an outside group. All projects have oversight and accountability. We have a facilities team along with project management. This is in parallel to the town's process, and there's plenty of oversight. Our facilities team reports to our COO and superintendent and the board ultimately, and we have oversight on all of this. It's not the same team that deals with academics. We're not taking people out of classrooms to build stadiums. We request capital funds and get monthly reports on capital projects. The administration is now, in fact, sending a quarterly update on capital projects to the community, which is the transparency that was asked for, same as you get from the building committee, and you would have gotten the latest one today. Also, there's some confusion about what a building committee does. The building committee is responsible for carrying out the educational specifications set by the BOE. They can't change them. They actually have to go and build what we tell them to build. This doesn't lessen the burden on the BOE at all. The BOE member and the facilities manager at a minimum are at every building committee meeting. Ultimately, these projects get turned over to the Board of Ed, and we have to run them. We need to make sure the systems are equivalent with our other product, with our other buildings, and that we aren't going to have any long-term issues because of something a building committee did. But ultimately, the BOE is still responsible, and while the BOE doesn't oversee projects on a day-to-day basis, our professional staff does. That's what they're hired to do, that is what they do. Now, not all building committees are successful. Yes, we had successful building committees for Glenville and New Lab. I sat on the New Lab Building Committee, on time, under budget. That was our motto, and that's what we did. But that ignores HAMAB, and it ignores MISA. And those are two very large projects that went over on time and over on money. Now, what oversight is there for town projects like the skating rink or the civic center? What oversight was there for the fire and police station? How many of you actually know how much that costs? There wasn't a committee for those. And while there might be a steering committee for the skating rink, it's not a building committee. Ultimately, the town, one individual and his department will run that project, just like our facilities team manages our projects on a day-to-day basis. I'll end with this, more government is not always good government. This doesn't make a lot of sense, but if you're going to do this, you need to do this for the town projects as well. I'd ask that you please vote no on this item. And again, I am speaking as an individual. Thank you.
Betsy Fruman to be followed by Donna Gaddiosso-Ziel. Unmute. Please unmute. Betsy Fruman.
District 9 has been working on this for a long time. I know you all, members of the RTM, have had time to think about it. Building committees for DPW projects are not what we are discussing here and should not be brought into this discussion. If the RTM wants that, someone should create a new ordinance for that. This ordinance is titled "School Building Committees." It has been titled that for 52 years, and this ordinance itself could not easily be changed into a catch-all for DPW projects. We did speak with DPW, as others have said. We have, we have done our homework. We don't believe that this adds another layer of bureaucracy. We believe it is good government, governance. It brings more public, more of the public into the process. The building committee that was created for the Cardinal Stadium, this banned in 2019. It did not have public meetings, it did not have minutes. This ordinance, changing this ordinance, would force a building committee to follow the FOIA recommend, the FOIA requirements. Please vote yes for this. Thank you.
Donna Gaddiosso-Ziel to be followed by John Eddy.
Hi, this is Donna Gaddiosso-Ziel. I want to say that a former speaker said that this process is really not necessary. I believe the process of having a building committee is necessary, because just look at the stands at Cardinal Stadium. We hit some bumps in the road. I feel a building committee would have solved that from the beginning. As far as all projects in the town of Greenwich having some type of building committee, as our chairperson said, maybe that's something down the road. This ordinance dealt specifically with the Board of Ed, and that's why we looked at the Board of Ed projects. Okay. The ordinance basically talks about the state requiring a building committee. They do that because of the fact that we're spending tax dollars, state tax dollars. Why would we not want that for the town of Greenwich when we spend these, our tax dollars of people of Greenwich that we represent? I ask you to please support this. This is going to ensure oversight, transparency and financial responsibility for the tax dollars of the people of Greenwich. Thank you very much.
All right, I did get a question that some of these speakers have spoken already. This is a separate item. People are free to speak again on the merits here, whether or not they spoke on the motion to postpone. John Eddy to be followed by Molly Salivi.
I want to make information.
Who's speaking?
Adam Rothman, District 3. I'm wondering how many speakers we have on the list?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine more. Two minutes each. John Eddy to be followed by Molly Salivi. Raise your hand, Mr. Eddy, so we can identify, please. No, John Eddy? Molly Salivi to be followed by Brian Mallon.
Transparency, governance, oversight, community involvement, noble ideas and good process? Yes. But let's take a holistic approach to all town-owned facilities, not just the schools. And that we're starting here because the ordinance deals with schools only falls short for me. It's in there in the ordinance, because it's a state requirement when we speak of the origin for school building committees. So I respectfully disagree that town facilities are not appropriate to this conversation. Dorothy Hamel and the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center are $16 to $18 million of taxpayer dollars, and perhaps climbing in cost, yet neither would be compelled, are compelled to have building committees. Let's have one set of rules for town and school buildings. And if I'll take a quick second to compare the Hamel rink and the Cardinal Stadium similarities, cutting roads, mechanical engineering, plumbing, erecting a building, changing a traffic pattern, potentially closing off an entrance, I think the current written ordinance is sufficient, and that these proposed inclusions aren't necessary. So why add potential bureaucracy and red tape? We have a mechanism for building committees, which is state aid. And, you know, for, as well, what it comes down to for me is, we have eight elected volunteer fellow residents in the Board of Education and a paid GPS staff, and either we trust them to do their jobs and make good decisions, or we don't. And I do. And so it brings me all back around to Cardinal Stadium, the genesis of this initiative. And that's enough for me. Someone who also mentioned from D9 the hundreds of millions in the long-range capital budget as a reason, as I think Mr. Bernstein stated, they'll automatically have them, because they'll be seeking state aid. Okay, thank you. So I urge you to vote against.
Brian Mallon to be followed by Seth Bacon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll be brief. I feel my district mates have brought up a lot of good points. I would just like to take a slightly different tact about something I learned during this process that I found interesting, and that's, if the Board of Ed produces ed specs and forms a building committee, then we're eligible to apply for state aid, even, even after the project, you know, retroactively, because they only look apparently once a year. But if they don't form a building committee, then as soon as those funds are appropriated and spent, it's gone. We can't go back, we can't ask for state aid. And I think it just makes sense to me, is why wouldn't you? Why would you leave, potentially leave money on the table? And I don't want this, you know, to go off into the weeds of Cardinal Stadium, because that's, you know, that might have been the genesis of this, but it evolved far beyond that. But taking that as an example, we heard, well, there's no need for a building committee because there's no state funds available. So, you know, it's pointless. But I would point out then, you know, in December of 2020, just last December, the State Bonding Commission considered $2.25 million for a new football stadium in Berlin. So, I mean, these things can change. You can have new precedents, you can have, you know, different priorities in Hartford. And it, to me, it's just leaving money on the table when we can just do it right from the start, get all the other benefits, and then always have the option of going back and requesting state aid. Thank you.
Seth Bacon to be followed by Brian Rainey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to start with, earlier the moderator intimated that I had cast an aspersion towards Mr. Bernstein. So I want to be on record, that was not my intention, and apologize to him and anyone else who perceived it that way. You've heard many comments from my fellow district mates about why this is good governance, so I'm going to focus on some of the things that have been said by previous speakers. Multiple speakers have pointed out that there are $300 million in capital projects on the horizon for the school board, and these will automatically have building projects in, or building committees in place, because they will apply for state aid. So I think that is perfect. That is one less thing for people to worry about. We are not going to be injecting a lot of new bureaucratic, bureaucratic process into this, because those will already have building committees. So that's one less thing for people to worry about, and I hope that people can also acknowledge the fact that, when we talk to P&amp;Z about how many projects needed an MI and would have triggered a building committee through the MI process for the past five years, it's been one project. So between projects already requiring building committees, the lack of kind of an overwhelming number of MI issues coming up, we believe that we're not injecting a lot of bureaucracy, we're not injecting a lot of undue process into, into this. It's also been talked about that the Board of Ed could choose to have building committees, but I'd just like to point out what's being said, and this is consistent, what's been said in Board of Ed meetings as well, is that there's interest to potentially pursue a building committee. And the building committees they're talking about are ad hoc committees. They might be through the Board of Selectmen, they might be through smaller committees from the Board of Ed. So it's not the same thing. We're talking about something with a very prescribed process. And then finally, people keep saying that if we can't have project, building committees for all projects, we shouldn't have building committees. I'm not sure why we would say, if we can't have it all, then let's have nothing. Let's start somewhere, and I think we should start here. Please vote yes on this ordinance change.
Brian Rainey to be followed by Janet McMahon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to emphasize again, this is an edge case, right? The fact that there's only one of them in umpteen years. The idea that we would not be applying for state aid for all of our projects, I don't believe was contemplated back in the 60s when they wrote this. So it's, it's a small change. For those of you who do partisan math, I'd like to point out that the waiver process requires essentially a bipartisan vote of the Board of Ed. Normally split 4-4, a majority vote of the membership would be five. So that, that requires a bipartisan decision by the Board of Ed. And finally, I'd like to thank Mr. Bernstein and the Board of Ed and the schools for the capital newsletter. I think that's a wonderful thing. It's been incredibly informative, and I hope it continues well past the, the end of our, our discussions about building committees for the schools. Thank you.
Janet McMahon to be followed by Fernando Shiro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Item two is not about more transparency or better governance. It is about creating an additional layer of bureaucracy and politics to an already, already bureaucratically and politically fraught Board of Education. If this ordinance passes tonight, any and all Board of Ed capital projects requiring- an MI, regardless of the scope or scale of the project, would be subject to the creation of a building committee. All know, building committees must be nominated by the Selectmen and pointed by the RTM, a process which can take a few months even on a good day. If such a project is miniscule in scope or scale, such as a sporting equipment shed, the Board of Ed would be able to vote against the creation of a building committee under this waiver provision. This would, however, require both the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen to put it on their agenda at the next appropriate meeting and then vote on it. Again, a process which could take a few extra months. There are also logistical and procedural holes in this ordinance change. There are no provisions for if and when a building committee cannot be formed, for example, whether due to a shortage of volunteers or some other reason. There are also no provisions for the rare but possible scenario in which the Board of Ed is deadlocked on the waiver 4-4, or the Board of Selectmen are as well. You will also recall that not too long ago, September of 2020 in fact, we had a similar item appear on our call. The RTM was tasked to opine on forming a proposed capital review committee, which was effectively a building committee for all town projects. That item was withdrawn due to the consensus that this type of committee is redundant and would strain volunteer resources and would also unduly add bureaucratic red tape to capital projects. While I agree we must work toward making our Board of Education more efficient, requiring building committees is not a panacea.
Thank you very much. Fernando, Fernando Shiro, to be followed by Abby Large.
Hello, Mr. Moderator, fellow members of the RTM. I just would like to point out that the extra bureaucracy was asked from us by the Board of Education. So, you know, that is there, right there. And I also just, I want to also point out that, you know, some of the previous speakers have talked about how, you know, this oversight, this, you know, building committee would slow down the project, which it hasn't even, you know, they approved the first part of the project, and then the second part wasn't even approved for the foundations. I feel like with a building committee there, you know, someone would have saw that. You know, it's not like if everyone, if the project falls on one hand, then, you know, something might go wrong. But the more people you have to look at it, two eyes are better than one. You know, that's why in research papers, you always go through a checklist of people who review your things, you know. So with that, I hope you vote yes on this amendment, and thank you.
Abby Large, to be followed by Lucy Von Brockel.
Thank you. I'd like to quote from the Law Department opining on the legislative history of the code. "The explanatory text provides no reasoning for why this language was included. In fact, the explanatory text appears to be in conflict with the language at issue in Section 239 of the code." The explanatory text states that "if the primary purpose of this legislation is to create committees, we can independently serve the town in being responsible for the construction of school projects from inception to completion of each project. Such a committee will have the single responsibility with all of its ramifications of carrying out the school building program, thereby relieving the Board of Education of such activity to focus on education and, equally important, involving interested citizens in such activity." Further, D9 is seeking to amend only one section of the town code. What governs town project is an entirely different set of town regulations. The Board of Ed currently has no oversight on capital projects by Greenwich taxpayers other than state-funded projects, and our item seeks to address that omission in the code. D9 feels this is a good place to start, given the huge number of capital improvements coming over the next decade. And I'll add, if there will be a building committees going forward, as Mr. Bernstein says, then why be opposed to having this ordinance be updated into the 21st century to require better governance and fiscal management for decades to come? Please vote yes on this item. Thank you.
Anyone present here to speak on this? What? All right. Lucy Von Brockel is our last speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you to D9 for bringing this issue up and starting this conversation because it's an important one. There's a lot of distrust and frustration in the community about planning and execution of capital projects. I don't think anyone disputes that, and trying to mitigate that is admirable. But I believe the premise behind this ordinance amendment is not the appropriate one. What is the problem that we're trying to solve here? From my point of view, you know, we're either trying to solve Cardinal Stadium and getting a building committee on there, or we're trying to solve the overarching problem of there being a lack of trust and frustration about how the Board of Ed deals with its capital projects. I would hazard to say that dealing, I've been following the skating rink project, which is, there is no oversight. It's, there's a committee. It's nothing like a building committee, and it's very challenging to follow and get done what you want. I think that there are so many, you know, basically, this, we start from the prioritization of capital projects, which this body has complained about a number of times. We touch on every aspect of the approval and appropriation process, and we end with concerns about project management and problems that sometimes arise after a project is complete. This is a town-wide problem, and I think we really need to consider top-down changes instead of looking for an ordinance that we can tweak to suit a need in the moment. I think it's important that we push forward with having some kind of change and get the town to have a, you know, broader capital planning committee that has more oversight and accountability. I could go into way more detail, but I think you all want to go home soon. So thank you very much. Thanks.
All right. That is our final speaker on item two. At this point, I'm going to call for a vote on the merits. If you are in favor of adopting this change to the Code of Ordinances, Code of Ordinance proposed by District Two, you would vote yes. If you are against adopting this proposal... What did I say? This, I don't know. Item two, yes, that's what I was thinking. All right. The District Nine proposal, if you are in favor of it, you vote yes. If you are opposed, you vote no. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards, item number two, and proceed fully your delegation? All right. Five minutes has expired. Voting is still in process, but we are moving on to our final item. This is item 25. Katie DeLuca, the town planner, will present that item.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. This item is, as it appears on the call, and it's to add the language for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 25 has been moved and seconded. We will now hear the report to the committees that consider this, beginning with Michael Basham, oh, I'm sorry, Alexis Valgueras, Chair of Health and Human Services Committee.
Good evening. Before I give my report, I just wanted to thank some of the people that allow us to come and be so successful in Central Middle School. Tom Healy, who's the principal of Central. Nikki Turpin, who is our IT person who helped set up all of this before we get here. And then the custodial staff, Chris Jordan and Eric Emmetson, who help us throughout the evening. So I appreciate all their help, and I apologize in advance because this is going to be a long report. Last Tuesday, Health and Human Services welcomed Dimitria Nelson, Commissioner of the Department of Human Services, Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney, Katie DeLuca, Town Planner, Bob Baralek, Member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and Margarita Albin, Chairwoman of Planning and Zoning Commission, to our meeting. We listened, we started by listening to our guests provide us with the long history of the concept of an affordable housing trust and the current status of affordable housing in Greenwich. The concept of developing an affordable housing in Greenwich was first discussed in 1988, and at that time, the RTM tabled the item at their June meeting. In 2009, the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at this item, but it stalled at their commission. Now, because of significant pressure at the state level, which requires that communities have a minimum of 10% of their housing stock designated as affordable, and the threat of an enormous fine, possibly as much as $30 million in the case of Greenwich, for not being in compliance, there was a renewed effort in town to establish a plan that will allow us to create more affordable housing. Ms. Albin stated that some of the goals of the Affordable Housing Trust are to maintain local control over our planning and zoning regulations, control our own destiny, and avoid overdevelopment. Katie DeLuca explained that the state has two categories to define affordable housing: assisted housing and set-aside development. Assisted housing is when a developer uses either state or federal money, and they create below-market housing with that money. So Greenwich Housing Authority, or what is now known as Greenwich Communities, would be an example of that in Greenwich. And set-aside development is when a developer has set aside at least some percentage of the overall number of units at below-market rate in his development. Greenwich currently has 5.32% of housing stock that meets the strict definitions of affordable housing, and until we reach the 10% minimum, developers can come in, apply under the 830G statute, and build a development that largely ignores local zoning regulations. Ms. DeLuca explained that an application can only be denied if it's determined that there is a public health or safety hazard that outweighs the need of affordable housing. And she provided the example of the development at the Post-Road Ironworks site, where that project was proposing 355 units on a parcel of land that normally would have only allowed four. The reason for that application being denied was because of sewer capacity. Had the sewer system not been an issue, the project could have potentially been approved. We also learned that while there are many private clubs and schools that provide housing to their staff, those units do not count as affordable because they are not deed restricted as... Yet another reason why we should be meeting in person exclusively without digital devices.
That's why we're okay.
Yeah. I don't even know where I was. So we, so we learned that while there are many private clubs and schools that provide housing to their staff, they do not count as affordable because they are not deed restricted as affordable housing, and they don't meet fair housing law because the units are not open to the public. You need to be affiliated with the club or the school to be eligible for housing. Similarly, we learned that the concept of workforce housing would not fall under affordable housing. One of the huge impediments in the state for affordable housing is that the income of the individual to qualify for an affordable unit is based on a state income average. The state income average is 45% less than what people in our town actually make. So for example, the starting salary for teachers or fire personnel is approximately $69,000 to $70,000, and the state average is closer to $57,000. So workers are already over the minimum threshold to qualify. In addition to building more affordable housing through either assisted housing or set-aside housing, there is a way Greenwich could earn points through a housing unit equivalency points program. Points are awarded for affordable housing that were constructed after 1990, of which Greenwich has actually very little of that type of housing stock. In order for Greenwich to earn enough affordable housing unit equivalency points to trigger a moratorium on the 830G regulation, we would need to create between 250 and 300 units of housing. One way that Greenwich could accumulate points is for the trust to partner with Greenwich Communities on a large renovation of an existing property and make more of those units affordable housing, not just market-rate housing. So McKinney-Carriss or Foreinol projects have the potential to generate about 150 units of affordable housing for Greenwich. That would be a net gain in that area. If this approach is used, you are not creating new density, but you are taking existing stock and making it more affordable. It's possible that the town made a significant financial investment with Greenwich Communities. We could achieve the 250-unit goal within five years. So that's a summary of where we are now with affordable housing. So what does the trust do? The trust is looking for ways to help developers construct affordable housing by securing private donations and using that money, as Bob Baralek described it, as pixie dust, to serve as a catalyst to generate more affordable housing. So how does that pixie dust work? The trust would amass ideally between $3 and $5 million through private donations. No anonymous donations are allowed. And with a meaningful amount of money, the trust, quote, "gives notice to the world that money is available," with the hope that the developers who are looking for some additional dollars to complete their project would apply and in turn build some affordable housing units. Bob Baralek, who has a 40-year history in affordable housing development, noted it's almost impossible for a developer to build affordable housing units without support from a government entity because the land costs in the area are so high that it's not economically feasible. Mr. Baralek pointed out that because property on the western side of town tends to be slightly less expensive than on the eastern side of town, it's harder economically for a developer to build the affordable housing on the eastern side. The trust will give the town a financial tool to make it easier for developers to build in high-cost land areas, thereby creating a scattered approach to affordable housing versus having the housing concentrated in one area of town. In addition to donations to the trust, another concept that could be considered is something called fee and lieu. In such a case, a developer, instead of complying with the new inclusionary zoning laws, which require any multifamily housing that is over four units to have a below-market rate component, the developer would pay a large fee to the trust that would allow them to opt out of the requirement. The trust would then use that money to create more affordable housing by investing in other developments. Ms. Albin indicated that as little as $55,000 is enough money to provide a developer to convert a market-rate unit to an affordable housing unit. Health and Human Services did not have any concern with the member composition of the board proposed to oversee the trust. We were happy to see that the board included the Commissioner of Human Services, who can provide valuable insight to the board's trust regarding the housing needs of the clients serviced by the department. Health and Human Services did hear that there will be a motion offered by one of the other committees this evening to establish a special committee of RTM members to work on this resolution. We were initially quite disappointed to learn that such a special committee was not inclusive of the four standing committees that were referred to this item, but I understand now that that position may have been changed. We also suggested that proponents hold a series of public information sessions for RTM members and the public throughout the summer to answer questions and gather additional feedback. Our vote, as a first read on this item, was 11-1-0, with District 12 voting no because that delegate felt they needed more information. Thank you.
All right. Before calling on Mr. Basham, but Ms. Basham, why don't you come forward? I do have the results of the vote on item number two on the merits. This is the District Nine proposal on school building committees. Those in favor, 121; opposed, 70; abstaining, 6. That item is carried. Continuing with item 25, Michael Basham with the report of our finance committee.
Again, one of the joys of following Alexis is that she does such a comprehensive, gives such a comprehensive report, makes my job much easier. Thank you. Just follow up on a couple of things that were discussed by Ms. Albin with the finance committee. She discussed that, really, the genesis of the report was that they utilized, or I should say, they went to a series of towns that also had an affordable housing trust. Couple of them were Darien, came in Fairfield, and Stanford. We used, Stanford was the most comprehensive of the trust documents, and that's the one that they used to pattern ours after. She did one out to say that the current plan is trusted and funded by private donations, but in the future, other funding sources could be considered. And to the extent that that arises, the BDP and the RTM would have the decision to approve any funding sources. She also further stated that creating the trust would signal to the state that Connecticut is pursuing all permissible solutions to meet our affordable housing goal. She further mentioned that there is no firm date under the current statute by which communities must meet their housing goal. So recently, they have done numerous legislative initiatives in Hartford to assess financial penalties on towns to encourage them to make faster progress. A committee member asked if town employees were eligible for affordable housing. She responded that the town employees' salaries far exceeded the state income cap for eligibility. One member raised some concerns about the potential for concentration of affordable housing developments in certain areas of town. Sam Romeo, Chair of the Greenwich Housing Authority, made it clear that development was expected to take place all across Greenwich. An additional concern was that the private donations would be insufficient to meet the trust's... trust's goals, and that this would result in the need to tax developers. Sam Fuller, who was Chair of the Darien Trust, mentioned that developers would have the option of either setting aside units for affordable housing or paying a fee to the trust in lieu of the set-aside. Since they would have a financial obligation either way, they would be in a position to take whichever option they believe was in their best financial interest. The committee was of the opinion that the trust was a good option for the town to utilize. However, since this was the first read, they believe the RTM members would benefit from a thorough review of the proposed trust before it was brought back in September. Motion was made and seconded to refer the item to the Land Use Committee for review and consideration of proposed changes recommended by other RTM committees. That motion was approved 12-0-0. In subsequent conversations with the moderator, moderator pro temp, and other committee chairs, it was decided to create a special committee comprised of members of all four committees that took up this item. The Darien Finance Committee held a special meeting already this evening, voted to withdraw its prior motion, and moved to create this new special committee. Vote was 12-0-0. At the appropriate time, I will submit that motion to the RTM for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the Land Use Committee report.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. So the RTM Land Use Committee met jointly with the Finance Committee and the Legislative and Rules last Monday, June 7, to discuss item 25, this Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And you heard Alexis's fine report, and you just heard the Finance Committee report by Michael Basham. So I don't think I can add much. We did, I think it's important to note that this state law that requires 10% of affordable housing has in fact been on the books for 30 years. So when you hear that, you heard that Greenwich is currently at only 5% versus the 10% requirement. So we're short of that state requirement by 5%, which equals about 1,300 units of housing. And there are two ways you can get to the 10%. One is through assisted housing, which you heard is government-assisted housing, such as provided by the housing authority, which we now know, which is now known as Greenwich Communities. And the other way is through set-aside housing. We now have an inclusionary zoning requirement, which requires a private developer to set aside a percentage of affordable units in a multifamily building. In order for Greenwich to reach the goal of 10% via inclusionary zoning, we heard that Greenwich would need to approve about 4,000 units of new multifamily housing, which we were told is roughly equivalent to all of the current housing in Old Greenwich south of the Post Road. And currently, there are only two small inclusionary developments underway. So clearly, the Greenwich Communities' approach, that is, the assisted housing is the way toward, the way to get to that goal. And you heard about the consequences of noncompliance. A developer can build a development that basically ignores our local zoning regulations, and it could be taller, it could have less setback from the building lines, it could have less green space. So those are all undesirable results. And you heard about the moratorium. I won't go back over that. You heard that this proposed Affordable Housing Trust Fund initially at least will be largely funded only through private donations. And that the funds could be used to encourage landlords to convert existing units into deed-restricted units to help reach the 10% goal. And we did hear from the Darien person who represents their Affordable Housing Trust So on questions, Port Harris noted that he was somewhat skeptical of the town of Greenwich's proposed funding approach. He noted that whereas fundraising would start out benignly, it could morph into a fee-in-lie approach, which he described as a tax. I asked whether, presuming the town could produce the 2,700 units needed to require the 10% threshold, would that amount of housing be sufficient to house all the low-income workers in town, including our part-time workers, our hourly workers, minimum wage restaurant waiters, landscapers, house cleaners, childcare workers, elderly care workers? Many of those people currently work, they work in Greenwich, but they commute to Greenwich from other towns. In response, I was referred to the United Way's recent needs assessment. A member asked whether the majority of affordable housing units were on the west side of town. Sam Romeo responded to that saying probably yes, but Greenwich Communities does manage a considerable number of units in our downtown and in Old Greenwich and other neighborhoods. Christine Edwards noted that the housing owned by private schools and clubs in Greenwich do not count toward the state requirement, and she expressed the opinion that such properties, therefore, should be taxed by the town. The Land Use Committee's vote on this item was 12-0-0 in favor of the item.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Chair of Legislative and Rules, to be followed by Lucia Jansen.
Legislative and Rules considered this item at its joint meeting with Finance and Land Use beginning at 7:30 PM on Monday evening, and then we broke off to our separate meeting at 8:35 and continued with this item for another hour. We were helped by Margarita Albin, Chair of the Planning and Zoning, Katie DeLuca, Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning, Amina Ahmad, the Assistant Town Attorney, Bob Barilak, who has development experience with affordable housing, Ken Rogodinsky, who has experience in affordable housing development finance, Sam Turner, who is a community member of the Darien Affordable Housing Trust Fund and a developer of Avalon Apartments, and Sam Romeo, Chair of the Greenwich Communities' Commissioners. We have, item 25 is an ordinance proposed by Planning and Zoning Commission to help fund the development of housing that meets the state's definition of affordable housing. In the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development, which has been approved by the RTM, Objective 2.1 states that it is objective to create more affordable housing as currently defined under Section 830G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Subparagraph AII of this objective develops, directs the town to consider the making of payments into a housing trust fund to allow funds gathered from state and federal grants, donations, and more to facilitate construction of affordable housing. So this proposed ordinance is consistent with the objectives of the POCD, which of course has been reviewed and approved by the RTM. Now, the previous reports were very extensive and comprehensive, and I'll just mention one or two other things that would be applicable here. The, if the town, if a developer comes with a proposal that is inconsistent with our zoning, and we have not met the 10% or the moratorium number of affordable housings, affordable housing units, the developer can file a lawsuit, and it's the burden on the town to prove first that the denial of the project was necessary to protect public interest in health, safety, and other matters, which may be legally considered by the commission. Additionally, such public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing, and such public interest cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the proposed development. So if there's any, the burden is on the town to make it, to convince the court that we have good reasons for turning down the proposal. Also, it is important for us to move forward on meeting the goal of 10% affordable housing as quickly as we can, because as mentioned before, the state has proposed numerous laws that will negatively impact Greenwich if we fail to do so. And some of these laws may be adopted, and then we will be stuck. One of the examples of that was a substantial $30 million fine, which I'm not aware of that it's been adopted yet, but it's in the works. It's at least it's been put on the table. Now, Legislative and Rules, as I stated, mentioned, attended a joint meeting and a separate meeting, and mentioned and raised a significant number of items of questions and comments that our guests addressed, and the speakers welcomed several suggested changes and clarification. This indicated that item 25 could benefit from further analysis and revision. To achieve this goal, a motion was made to refer the item to a special committee. The vote in favor of the motion was 11-1-0, with District Nine voting no, as it was thought to be not necessary. Normally, I would make the motion at appropriate time, but Mike Basham of Finance will be making a motion, and so I will await that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen with the report of our budget overview committee.
Good evening. We want to begin by thanking all those involved in our town leadership, from the first selectmen, planning and zoning, as well as our state representatives in Hartford, with their engagement, attending many, many Zoom meetings, lively discussions, research of the options and issues regarding Hartford's affordable housing proposed legislation. There were many headlines made with the discussion, and obviously, this is a hot state control issue. We understand that this proposed Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund is an important tool that P&amp;Z is working on to address our desire for local control and destiny with Greenwich's affordable housing stock. Your VOC spent a lot of time on this item. Thankfully, this item will require two reads, because there is a lot to absorb with the proposed ordinance and related documents with the Declaration of Trust and Affordable Housing Plan, documents that are yet to be created. We had a large group of visitors, including Ms. Alvin, Chair of the P&amp;Z Commission, the sponsor of the Housing Trust Fund ordinance, P&amp;Z Director Katie DeLuca, Amina Ahmad, Town Attorney, who assisted in the development of the ordinance, Pete Minarski, Town Comptroller, to discuss the financial aspects of the trust, RTM members Kip Bergweger and Peter Berg, who were contributors in crafting the ordinance. We also had Sam Romeo, who participated as an impromptu guest. Through our discussion on this matter, the VOC identified areas that needed further exploration and discussion. Some areas to highlight tonight is the high hurdle amount on expenditures before the RTM is involved with the ordinance, and the two-thirds require approval for a proposed housing project. Other areas identified is the desire for higher level of BET involvement. And we also want to review the Declaration of Trust, which is to be written over the next couple of months by Planning and Zoning. Our full list of items, which are 16 of them, are documented in the June 2, 2021 VOC minutes that are currently in draft mode and will be posted a little bit later. The committee looks forward to working on this important document for the second read. The committee decided not to take a vote on this item, as there were still many outstanding issues, and the item was likely to change significantly before the second read in September. Thank you.
All right, and just as with item number two, we have a subsidiary motion that we will take up first before we can get into the merits of this item. So Michael Basham, Chair of Finance Committee, has a motion to refer this to a special committee.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee moves that the RTM refer item 25, Resolution Dealing with the Establishment of Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund, to a special committee of the RTM, composed of two members each from the Finance, Health and Human Services, Land Use, and Legislative and Rules Committees, for further review.
Thank you. That's being offered on behalf of one of our committees. It does not require a second, and is now currently before us. Discussion on the Finance Committee motion to refer item 25 to a special committee.
One of information?
Excuse me?
One of information, Mr. Moderator. Is there a timeframe associated with this motion?
Mr. Basham, was there a time reporting back requirement with this motion?
No.
No.
No. No.
Well, no, 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 no. Once, if your motion to refer is adopted, it is then in the hands of the special committee, which then controls it. We can include a reporting back requirement, you know, that it should be brought back at a certain time. If we do not, it would then be up to this special committee. This would not automatically come back in September. It would, we would await whatever the special committee does, and they would then be responsible for bringing it back when it was ready to be brought back. So the question, so your motion does not include a time to bring this back. Is that correct? Okay. So there is no time reporting back requirement here. So what I was saying was, we did have a speaker sign-up list for the motion to, for a motion to refer. It was then the Legislative and Rules motion. Mr. Rainey, you were the only one to sign up on that. We did have six individuals sign up to speak on the merits of this, so I will offer them a chance if they want to speak on the motion to refer as well. Mr. Rainey, you are first up, though, speaking on the motion to refer item 25 to a special committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Absolutely, I'm in favor of that. I would, however, make a motion to amend the amendment to return no later than October 2021.
All right, a motion to amend this motion to refer is in order. So is there a second to Mr. Rainey's motion to amend the motion to refer by including a report-back date no later than October?
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to amend the Finance Committee motion to refer to include a report-back date of not later than the October meeting. Is there any objection to that amendment? Hearing none, the Rainey motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent. So we now have a report-back date as part of the motion to refer. Mr. Rainey, further comments?
No, Mr. Moderator. Just in favor of the motion.
All right. Anyone who signed up to speak on the merits, so Katie DeLuca, Town Planner, would you, do you have any comments on this? You have the floor if you'd like it.
Oh, thank, thank you. I would just like to say...
Right now, we're just speaking on the motion to refer, not on the parts of this. Thank you.
Yes, I understand. Yes, and I would just like to say that I think the committee reports were outstanding, and you covered all the bases, and we understand the issues that were raised at the various committees, and I think it's a good idea that we all move forward as quickly as we can with the committee. So I do appreciate the timeline being set on that, and I think that's a, I'm glad that that's been included. And I do also want to note that the recommendation by the Health and Human Services to have the public workshops is a very good one, as again, trying to move this forward as expeditiously as we can. So with that, those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, and I'll offer the floor to Margarita Albin, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. and Zoning Commission. Ms. Albin, do you care, do you offer any comments?
I know, no, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, sooner is better than later, I believe, for protecting, uh, Greenwich in the long term. Uh, I think we can accept October, and I hope that this committee can move expeditiously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lauren Raven, uh, Select Woman, do you care to speak on this?
Uh, not on the motion, but, um, on, on the, um, on the item in general. Thank you.
All right. So I'm now just asking for, um, comments on the motion to refer to special committee. Mike Warner, District Seven, any comments? Frederick Lee?
Oh, unmuted. Yes.
Uh, Mike Warner?
No, I have no further, I have no comments. Thank you.
All right. Frederick Lee, District One?
Uh, I have no comments at this point.
Peter Berg, anything further?
No comments.
Adam Leader, comments on the motion to refer? All right. Is there, is there any objection to this motion to refer? I'm not hearing any. All right, then, the motion to refer, now this, let me just make it clear. The two members each from Finance, Health and Human Services, Legislative and Rules, and Land Use for an eight-person committee. All right, with a report back date, not, not later than October, of the October regular meeting, and you'd have to meet the, uh, call deadline for the October meeting. All right, then, the motion to refer is adopted upon unanimous consent. There being no further business to come before the meeting tonight. I thank everyone for joining us in person. Again, thank you Barbara, Barbara Schellenberg for, for joining us. Uh, and everyone, please have a safe trip home. I will see you all in September here. Aloha. All right, good night.